Good evening. Today is April 28, 2022, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 School Board, or Board of Education, to order. Welcome to those of you who are in the audience here tonight and those who are watching online. Director Alt, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Miller. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We will now move to the information portion of our meeting. First, we'll receive a report about the Internet fiber infrastructure opportunity from Rachel Gordon, the Director of Technology. Welcome, Rachel.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Battle. This evening, Bob and I are here. We're excited to share an opportunity to partner and to share an opportunity with you to partner with the city of Burnsville and Dakota County that will provide ISD 191 with increased capacity and stability pertaining to our fiber infrastructure. This fiber network includes conduit and fiber strands that run underground throughout our community to connect our district buildings to each other and then out to the larger network. It is the backbone of our Internet and telecommunications system. Tim, can you let me forward? There we go. This board report is intended to provide you with a big-picture overview of the planning and the opportunities that are ahead for our district. The report is a high-level overview of our goals and the value of the project, but I will say many of the details are still being worked out. Ongoing discussions and planning meetings are happening, and update on our progress will be provided in the upcoming months. As our district spans two counties, our fiber infrastructure is also in two models. Currently, we own and maintain the fiber in our Scott County schools. So that's Harry Bishop, MW Savage, Hidden Valley Elementary, as well as Eagle Ridge Middle School. The fiber that serves all of our other schools, those in Dakota County, is part of a lease with Comcast that is going to expire in January of 2024. As we prepare for the end of that lease, we've been investigating all of the options for this next phase of our fiber needs. And through discussions with Dakota County and the city of Burnsville, we have begun planning a project that would allow us to have more control and to upgrade our capacity while also reducing our costs. The project we are designing is similar to other partnerships that Dakota County has engaged with with other Dakota County school districts. Our district's network admin, Bob Wyler, is joining me tonight as we share our early planning for this project. We're also closely working with personnel from Dakota County as well as the city of Burnsville. The Dakota County Board and the city council are aware of and supportive of the current project planning. So I'm a visual person, so I like maps and visuals. And I wanted to show this because what it shows is these lines you'll see along the roads, that this is how our fiber runs through our state, county, and city roads throughout our community. Almost any major intersection road has fiber that runs alongside of it. As the city of Burnsville is desiring to connect city parks and their facilities, and Dakota County desires to connect county traffic lights that are close to our school buildings, it makes sense for us to partner with them to run conduit and fiber once while meeting each of our needs. This will significantly reduce the cost of the project for all of us. The engineering design work is yet to be finalized, but the image gives you an idea of what the planning looks like. In this picture, you're going to look kind of on the righty-left-hand side. You'll see Edward Neal Elementary School. And there's a red line that goes straight down from that. That is the current line that goes out to our Scott County. So Edward Neal is an important site for our infrastructure because it connects our Dakota County and our Scott County fiber runs. So that red run goes over to our Scott County schools. And then you'll see the kind of the pink lines, and those are coming in. This is what we're working on right now with designing for every one of our Dakota County schools, is where those lines would run in, where we can maximize the opportunities from Dakota County and the city of Burnsville, and where they want fiber run to make sure that we can connect all of our schools. I think this is also a good example because in this one, because Edward Neal is a critical location for us, we want to have redundant lines that come in so the resiliency of our network is there so that if something did happen to one of the lines, we're still up and running. We don't lose four of our, five of our schools at one time. This one gets a little bit busy, but the intent of this slide is really to showcase the design and engineering that's involved in the project. It's also key to acknowledge that a project like this takes time to build. Our current fiber lease, it ends in January of 2024, but when we start to backtrack that and count for, unfortunately, Minnesota winter is a big one, permits, supply chain considerations, testing, and then also E-rate, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a moment, the timelines. It's critical that we move forward now to have the infrastructure in place so that when that lease is over, we have what is needed. The benefits of partnering with Dakota County and the city of Burnsville ensure that we own our fiber assets, that we can increase our capacity and the number of strands available so when we think about future-proofing our system, and that we can add that redundancy, which ensures that our system is more resilient. So we like to talk about those resilient pieces. Our costs will be reduced as we will no longer have the Comcast lease. And tonight, I'm not bringing exact cost estimates because part of the, part of this is finalizing the design, which obviously drives those costs. As we continue on the design piece, we're very cognizant of trying to make sure that we're bringing this in as the lowest cost possible. For this project to be successful, we will need to have a joint powers agreement in place with Dakota County and the city of Burnsville, and that will allow the entities to work together. We are currently working on a draft form, and it is based on the JPAs that they have in place with other school districts in Dakota County. We'll also need to agree on an IRU or an indefensible right of use, and that will spell out the details such as the ownership of the cable, the fiber, who is responsible for fiber locate and break-fix costs. And fiber locate is the service that when you call GoForOne, or if you're going to dig in your yard and they come and flag and spray paint your yard, that's the fiber locate, which is a requirement if you have fiber. And then the other piece is that, obviously, since some of, many of these will run along easement, sometimes construction, natural disasters, or other things happen, and fixes needed for the fiber. The IRU will also spell out the costs to our district. The cost is a critical determination as we move forward with this project, and we'll utilize all possible funding sources for the project. For us in this district, that includes tapping into our category-one funding for E-rate. Next year, it will be critical that as a district, that we reach out to our families and have them complete the educational benefits application. So I know I talked about this a few months back. We know that our accurate percentages of our families who qualify for free reduced lunch is over 50%. That threshold moves us from an E-rate reimbursement of 60% to 80%. And so obviously, with a project such as this, that's a pretty sizable amount of money. We're also considering the status of our closed schools. Tonight, you'll hear a recommendation for the sale of Metcalf, but in anticipation of Metcalf's future, we have removed it from the planning process for this project. We have left Sioux Trail Elementary and MW Savage in our planning at this time. We will continue to plan with Dakota County and the city of Burnsville, and will bring that recommendation for a JPA and IRU for you to consideration, and it probably will come in about early summer, mid-summer. In late summer, we'll begin the E-rate application process, and we're earmarking early fall for board approval for the project. While these are our best estimates for our timeline, our goal is to continue to work diligently so that we have the best option in place for our future fiber needs. With that, I want to thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, are there any questions? Director Alt?
Thank you, and thank you both for bringing this forward. This is good news, really exciting, particularly knowing that we need to have that redundancy and the resiliency in our system to make sure that school continues. I am not a tech person. I'm going to preface the question with that. Does this, will this affect positively the work in virtual academy or school from home for our families, or is that a separate conversation?
It wouldn't have direct impact on a home to our school connections. So if you're thinking of like a student who may be in our geographic area that's connecting in, it wouldn't have direct impact for them. What it really is, is providing our school buildings with really substantive fiber for Dakota County.
And then I guess just a comment. I appreciate, you know, your review of, you know, Metcalf, the possible status of Metcalf, as well as, you know, what we currently know about Sioux Trail and MW Savage. And I appreciate that you are including them in your plans because I think if we're going to be optimistic, you know, we are going to need those schools again, and to not include them in this project might be short-sighted if we simply look at where we are right now. So, thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we will receive reports from board members about board committees, appointments, and school assignments. Are there any reports this evening?
If I can give my report from AMSD. Oops. I can give my report from AMSD.
Okay.
We had a meeting, AMSD, April 8. The speakers were, sorry. Oh, Amy Schulting and Bee Burnham. They were focusing on a subsidy bill for special education and cross-funding. They also want to fight for the surplus money that we have in our state. And so they're just encouraging people to please write your legislators, which I guess that was already settled this evening, I think, on the news they were saying what they're going to do with that money. But anyway, this was back in, I mean, earlier in April. They also just want to let people know that one of their main goals for Minnesota is a bold literacy plan. They understand, coming from the pandemic, that our students are lacking behind in a lot in reading, so they want to train in science and instruction of reading. They want home and community engagement. They really stress home engagement. And there is a proposal for $2.5 million for the science of reading academics. And, let's see what there is. Oh, they're going to also include a tool, like a handbook guide, that's going to come out this summer, that they want teachers to use in summer school for this program. And there's also a proposal for online learning for students to use during the summer to increase their reading skills. The goal is, yeah, the goal is just to increase these skills. And they have an ominous bill for employers also to increase their revenue for students in that program, the kind of like, oh, what do you call it, a mentorship program. They want to also increase that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other, are there any other committee reports? Director Alt?
Just a brief one. The assignment to the Burnsville Festival and Fire muster. The committee and the governing board continues to move forward with plans to diversify activities during the September festival. We are working on a day-long athletic tournament as well as music from a variety of performers and musical styles. More to come on that hopefully sometime soon. Plans include providing easy access to the festival with transit, bringing people from the heart of the city to the ice arena, allowing differently-abled people to easily attend. And of course, members continue to seek out sponsorships to help fund it all. Thank you.
Very nice. I have one quick update also from the Burnsville High School Hall of Fame. The Hall of Fame Committee has had two meetings this month in order to narrow down the 2022 nominees. The first meeting was to narrow down to our group of finalists, and then there was a meeting yesterday where the inductees for 2022 were selected. Those names will be announced after they've actually been notified by the Hall of Fame Committee members. And then the induction will be at the Maraz Center at Burnsville High School on Friday, October 14, before the football game, with the usual on-field recognition for those inductees at halftime of the football game. And that concludes my report. So if there are no other reports, we will move on to the business portion of our meeting. We'll begin by approving the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe, seconded by Director Alt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. First item under new business is to adopt a resolution approving the purchase agreement of Metcalf Middle School, the property between ISD 191 and Syndica LLP. Stacy, how do you pronounce the last? Should I say this before? Kilvang? Will be presenting the recommendation. Welcome, Stacy.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Directors, nice to see you, and Dr. Battle as well. And you can just call me Stacy, that those Bs always throw everybody off, so.
Stacy from Ellers, welcome.
Stacy from Ellers, thank you. Well, tonight, I mean, is kind of an exciting night, you know? Maybe a little bittersweet. You guys have gone through a long process really to talk about your facilities and the future needs of your district, and what was the best way to handle some of your existing assets. As you recall, we were able to sell River Ridge School for another use, which gave some nice dollars for you to pay off some existing debt that you had there. And then the second one on our list was the Metcalf Metal School. As you recall, we met with you back in February and early March to discuss an offer that we did receive. You gave us direction to move forward with negotiating the purchase agreement and finalizing that for a close, so that's what we're here to discuss tonight. So at a high level, the big points in the purchase agreement are, the buyer is Syndica LLP for a purchase price of $12.3 million. They will be depositing $50,000 in earnest money with the title company once we have a signed purchase agreement. They have requirements for additional earnest money that they have to give to the district to title, and that is based on any extensions from the due diligence period, and also after they get final approvals from the city if their plans are going to be accepted to move forward. They are a cash buyer. The big thing in here is it's pretty typical boilerplate, you know, purchase agreement of everything that we have to do. So they basically have a due diligence period of 90 days. So within that 90 days, that's when they're going in to expect, do their soil borings and do all those things. So the district is giving them permission to go on the property to go ahead and do that. They have to leave it in good repair and good condition when they leave from doing that. But again, they have 90 days to complete that. At any time during that 90 days, they can terminate this purchase agreement if they find something that doesn't meet to their satisfaction or gives them concerns about the development, and the earnest money would be refunded at that time. After the due diligence period, we run into an approvals period, and so that gives them 120 days to meet with the city and go through their concepts and go through all their land use planning applications and approvals that are required and necessary for the property. Again, if they are unable to obtain approval for their future land use from the city, they can also terminate the agreement, and earnest money is returned at that point in time. After their approval period, we have to close within 60 days. So if you looked at the, if everything ran concurrently, 90 days for due diligence, 120 for approvals, and another 60 days for closing, that means that you close in nine months, right? So that would be January 1, approximately. Well, the reality is, is the buyer is motivated. They would like to see started construction, you know, even this fall and get going on that. So they'll probably be doing everything quickly and moving quickly through the approval process that you have. The big thing that we have in this are two things. I think that were important to the district, not only with what you're able to get from this asset by selling it, but also future use of that property. So one of the things that we will have in there is either a declaration of restricted covenants or a deed restriction, which will not allow use of that property for a private school, charter school, or any use of that nature. You will be allowed to use it for a school if you guys decide that you want to school Houston there. That will be the only thing. So they were fine with that. The second thing was demolition of the building. So we didn't want to have that building sitting there for a long time, and then if something changed within the crazy world that we're living in today with markets and everything, we didn't want to see that building reused as a school either. So within 120 days, they do have to receive a permit for demolition, so that means they've gone through and done their building demolition survey and everything that they need to do that. And then they have 180 days total to get that demolished. So probably in four to six months, that building has to come down after they actually close on the property. If in fact, they do not do that within that timeframe, you guys as a district have the right to go in and complete that demolition on their behalf so that building comes down, and then you will be able to assess that cost back to the owner, the new buyer or the new owner, and essentially, they have to reimburse you for those costs. So we thought, those are just some key things that we wanted to make sure would happen with this property. So with that, Vice Chair, Directors, that is the summary of the purchase agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I believe Dr. Battle is going to read the resolution at this point?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Hugh, Directors of the Board, reading highlights from the actual resolution being resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 191, Burnsville, Eagan, Savage, Dakota, and Scott Counties as follows. The school district and Syndica LLP, the buyer, desire to enter into a purchase agreement including without limitation certain addenda thereto, together, the purchase agreement, pursuant to which the school district will convey certain property owned by the school district and located at 2250 Difley Road in the city of Eagan, Minnesota, the property to the buyer. Pursuant to the purchase agreement, the district will convey the property to the buyer for a purchase price of $12,300,000. On October 8, 2020, the Board of the School District adopted a resolution entitled Resolution Approving the Open Facilities Action Plan and Authorizing Administration to Proceed with Next Steps for Possible Sale or Lease of Open Facilities of ISD 191. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary in the open facilities resolution, the school district hereby approves the purchase agreement in substantially the form presented to the school district, subject to modifications that do not alter the substance of the transaction and that are approved by the Board Chair and Board Clerk of the school district, provided that execution of the purchase agreement by those officials shall be conclusive evidence of their approval. I do recommend that the Board of Education adopts this resolution approving the purchase agreement of Metcalf Middle School property between ISD 191 and Syndica LLP.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Director Miller, second by Director Connor. Is there any discussion? Director Miller?
Actually, this is a question for you, Dr. Battle. Given the timeline that we're discussing with the, more specifically, the demolition that we're requiring, where are we at with the district as far as emptying this thing out? I'm guessing there's still some stuff in there we want to get out, right?
Yes, and I'll ask Executive Director Lisa Ryder to join me, to share some details. Since Metcalf was open, we have begun the process of reusing items such as furniture, reselling, so food and nutrition equipment items must be sold at a national auction. So we have already begun that process. We are also looking at organizing a plan to identify those items that should be recycled. And so if the Board does approve this purchase agreement tonight, Executive Leadership Team and I will receive a more comprehensive plan from David Lake, our Director of Operations, and Executive Director Lisa Ryder can give you a little bit more details about the plan. So we will comply with that, the purchase agreement expectation to remove our property inside Metcalf.
As a public school district, we must utilize a public auction process where you have bids for sale of equipment and things of that nature. So we utilize publicsurplus.com, and that typically is how we dispose of items that we consider obsolete or not used by us any longer. And so we will utilize that as necessary. Some of the equipment may not be something that would be sold, but instead may be recycled or indoor disposed of. And so that would be determined based upon what it is that we're talking about within the building. We do know we have quite a bit yet to address. With COVID following the action to close our buildings, there's quite a bit that necessarily didn't, we didn't have the time to go through that. Our focus was otherwise dealing with the pandemic.
And also, as you know, that building was utilized for COVID purposes, and so that also hindered the continuation of looking at items that we could use throughout the district, such as furniture, and collecting any curriculum materials, and as I mentioned, the food and nutrition services items at Metcalf.
Does the purchase agreement have any restrictions? I mean, start thinking about things like basketball hoops, light bulbs. I don't know, you know, there's probably some value to some of this stuff that we could take out.
So Vice Chair, Director, what you are removing is personal property, so that's typically your movable fixtures. Now, what will usually happen is typically when they bid this out and they do their demolition survey and everything, typically what happens is the demolition contractor gets the rights to salvage what they may want, or there's such as flooring, things like that, that they think is value as part of their contract that they have. Now, if there's certain things that as the district goes through that you find like, you know, these are things that maybe we want to retain, or keepsakes, or some other opportunities or options, by all means, just let us know. You have a buyer that's willing to work with you, and we can have a discussion with them with regards to that.
Sounds like it's being thought through. I just was curious.
I have a question for Lisa. Are we currently paying for utilities on the building?
Yes. Our largest expense when it comes to utilities is the cooling period. So there's conversation about whether or not we really need to begin that season, and so we may choose not to, which means we would want to address the things that need to be, you know, taken out, and whether or not we're renting the portion of the building that needs the cooling during a certain period of time of the year. Like, if we know this is going to be on a faster track and the buyer is looking to have that closing date sooner, then we may never start the cooling cycle in the ground section of the building. The square section does not have that anyway. So otherwise, yes, we are maintaining electricity and other things that are necessary, of course. We have been utilizing that building. We do have people with open door in the building on a weekly basis, and we also have a custodian that makes sure that, on a regular routine, that they're checking things out there as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, or Director Alt?
Just a question. Not sure, Dr. Battle, if it's for you or for you, Lisa. Really in the weeds, admittedly. As a district that's historically been known as a chess district, I know that there's an outdoor chess set, and I just wanted to ask what we're planning to do with that.
That is on, Director Alt, Directors of the Board, that is on the list of the presentation we'll see Monday. We know how cherished the chessboard is. Lisa, you have any other comments?
Yeah, I think that we will be addressing the chessboard. The question will be exactly what might that look like. Those are bricks in the ground, and the question is what will be the best in order to, you know, facilitate that process, and that's what we'll figure out.
Awesome. Appreciate knowing that it's part of the plans. Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Oh, we need to take a vote, don't we? This is a roll call vote, so Chrissy, would you please call the roll?
Alt?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Hugh?
Aye.
Werbe?
Aye.
Uh, Miller?
Uh, Miller?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. The next item on the agenda is to approve the pupil transportation service agreement and addendum with Schmitty and Sons for the period of July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. Joining us once again is Lisa Ryder. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you very much. Um, attached within the board packet is the contract itself as well as a summary. And I'd just like to, for the public purposes, be able to kind of review those highlights from the contract. Um, if, we have a current four-year agreement with Schmitty and Sons that expires June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. And state statute now allows for transportation agreements to be up to ten years without an, a request for proposal. So, negotiations of our new agreement have been conducted during the last few months, January through April. And, uh, we wanted to bring forward, uh, the current agreement. It is a six-year agreement. And, um, the rates that are established within this agreement are for the twenty-two twenty, twenty, I'm sorry, the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year would be a six percent increase. The second year of the agreement, twenty-three, twenty-four, it would be another sixty percent increase. For the following year, the third year, it, and third, fourth, fifth, and sixth year of the contract, each year, it would be three percent or the CPI, which is Consumer Price Index, whichever is more with a cap of five percent. We have, um, condensed the language of the contract. We previous, um, this contract along with the RFP information that we previously had had held separately. It's all now combined. So, it's all one document. So, you'll notice that that's a slight change from, from the past. So, we view this agreement as fully encompassing. There is an addendum that is attached. That addendum, um, does provide, given what we've experienced the last few years, the addendum includes and addresses the, um, days for which we may choose not to require transportation for reasons other than weather. And, uh, on those days, then, the rate would be ninety percent for those scheduled routes to and from school. Um, it is also mentioned in the addendum that this is something that is for, um, every change day below the one-seventy for the next school year. And then each year subsequent, we would determine the number of days that that would be applicable, um, for the following years. Um, we believe this agreement is one that is very favorable for both parties. Um, we so much appreciate the partnership and the collaboration that we do experience with Schmitty and Sons for the last few years. And we believe our families really benefit from that. So, I'm very pleased to recommend that this agreement is available now for your approval.
Thank you very much. Um, is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. Um, is there any discussion? Director Alt?
Thank you, Chair Hume. Um, so oftentimes, when we're talking about contracts, of course, budget comes up. And we know that, uh, historically, we have only been able to expect an increase from the state on the general formula, two and two percent. Um, I guess my question is for those taxpayers that might bulk at the six and six in the first, the six percent and six percent increase in each of the, the first two years of the contract. Um, can you explain or elaborate on the partnership, um, what the benefit is for us and why we would negotiate that kind of increase?
We are early in the process for what many of our neighboring districts will be doing when they consider their negotiations subsequent to the pandemic, right? I think every industry is experiencing various different things, whether it's supply chain issues or inflation or whatever that might be. For our transportation industry, we've all seen the prices of gas, um, and diesel. We also have, um, noted that the Consumer Price Index has greatly increased. What's the most unfortunate is that our school funding does not relate directly to the CPI, honestly. Um, unfortunately, we also live within the world in which CPI is how businesses survive and, and make their money. So, it is a, is a push and pull. And it is really something that you have to consider. What's the risk of not having the service and the ability to transport our students to school, um, affording all of our students the opportunity to get there without having to worry about parents driving them and other family members possibly doing so. So, it, it, it is something that we, you have to sit down, you negotiate it. We, um, we spent quite a bit of time working through this and understanding the environment in which our transportation company resides and lives in versus our funding environment. And I think it's, it's clearly understood, unfortunately, there is a gap. There is a big gap.
Thank you. And, and I know, um, you know, before Schmitty, um, we can remember that there were issues with transportation, um, regularly. And we don't experience that with Schmitty. They have really been, um, true partners. We see them, um, around in the school district. Um, and yeah, it is exactly what you said. It is kind of a tenuous relationship. Unfortunately, our funding does not keep up with CPI. That is the nature of who we are as a school district. And yet, we have this wonderful partner. So, um, thank you.
Welcome.
Are there any other questions? Director Miller?
Um, yeah, thank you for presentation in this tonight. Um, so, just to expand a little bit on that, um, not being in the, um, um, transportation business myself, but I, I understand, right, that the fuel cost is a, is inside of this, correct? So, we do not have a variable fuel cost, correct?
That is correct.
And then, um, I guess the point about not being in the business is that I, I'm assuming labor and fuel costs are probably Schmitty and Sons. And we'll just go with that assumption. Two largest pieces. And both of those are absorbed inside of this six, these increases that we're seeing, correct?
Right. I mean, as we sit down and work with them, um, through the process, it was really a matter of them figuring out what their costs are, how much that has changed. Um, keeping in mind too, that the, the last couple of years, our previous, our current contract, I should say, has had very minimal increases for the last two years. And so, there's, there's some balancing out of this as we move forward. Um, you know, the environment beyond this month, for example, I'm afraid is not going to get a whole lot better very soon. And so, there's a lot of districts that are going out for RFP right now and not getting a response.
Yeah, I guess the point I'm making is, those are two very volatile, um,
Yes.
numbers in today's world. And, and we really have no idea where those are going to go in the future. And, um, I guess I recognize that six and six is higher than what we're getting. But I, I personally appreciate the opportunity to lock in a six-year contract at a, at a fairly low increase rate and take away that volatility for, for the district. So, there's a give and take here. And I appreciate Schmitty and Sons taking that on their shoulders.
Any other questions? All right. I have just one question. I was just curious this week about, um, if Schmitty and Sons has looked into the possibility of converting more of their buses to electric buses?
Mm-hmm.
Or hybrid buses? I don't know. I know electric buses are a thing. I don't know about hybrid buses so much.
Right. So, any opportunity that Schmitty and Sons receives, whether it's a grant or other means, um, that's something they're, they're regularly looking into. As you know, they already have an electric bus that, um, is functioning it within the Lakeville District. And that was the first in the state of Minnesota. And so, as, um, as we had an opportunity last year, we provided information that assisted in their application process. So, they did apply. Um, you know, unfortunately, our fleet was a little bit too new. And they weren't selected necessarily as a recipient of that grant at that time. But that's something that they are very interested and will continue to pursue as well.
Great, thank you. And perhaps by the time the next contract is up, there'll be, there'll be much more comment to have electric buses. Who knows? That'll happen six years from now.
Vice Chair Hume, can I, I'll just expand slightly on that. I, I'm aware of this issue. And I, just for clarity for the community, uh, when we initiated with Schmitty and Sons a couple of years ago, they invested heavily
Yes.
into this contract and, and to the relationship with the district. And by that, I mean, they purchased a fleet of buses.
Correct.
Um, they, they were, um, uh, of gas or fossil fuel-driven, uh, buses. Um, and I, I don't know the exact mechanics, but electric buses are, I think roughly twice as much or something in that neighborhood. They're considerably more. I understand there's a lot of talk about the long-term benefit and all of that. And we appreciate that. Um, but I, I want to recognize that, uh, we're just a little unfortunate that we have a nice, brand-new fleet of new buses. And, and we'll have to work through that with them. I would, having said that, highly encourage, uh, continue to encourage the district leadership to, to work with Schmitty and Sons on illuminating, going, finding, and then co-op and working together for money that's being offered. Because there apparently is a fair amount coming both from the federal and state level. So, if we can get somebody to help us pay for them, we'd be more than happy to put electric buses out on the streets.
Great. Okay. If there are no other questions, um, I guess we'll, it's time to take a vote. Is all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Next on the agenda is to approve adjusting the schedule for ISD One-Ninety-One Middle Schools for the school day end time from two-fifty PM to two-thirty PM for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, will be presenting this recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hume, Directors of the Board. So, as you recall, at the last school board meeting, we had Principals Mohammed Salim and Principal Angie Poehl present implications, uh, for the recommendation they gave to me for vetting to, um, adjust the end time for our two middle schools, Eagle Ridge Middle School and Nicolet Middle School. And so, tonight, I bring forward that recommendation, um, that you approve adjusting the schedule for ISD One-Ninety-One Middle Schools for the school day end time from two-fifty PM to two-thirty PM for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt?
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. Is there any discussion? Director Alt?
Uh, just a comment. I, um, appreciating the time, that, the significance of time for the adults in our schools, to be able to reach out to families and connect and engage with our families. Um, as much as I know we're a proponent of investing as much time as we can in learning, I think that engagement with the families is, is important. Um, I will also reiterate expectations that we will see the results, um, that we will see more engagement with our, with our parents, that we will see, um, engagement helping students to, you know, settle into learning, settle into the classrooms, um, in partnership with, with the parents, and also to, um, improve our teaching skills through professional development, um, in all the ways that they can be. So, expectations.
Thank you. And the other, oh?
Assistant Superintendent Brian Gersich, um, I think he's going to share some comments about, uh, how we're moving forward
Yeah.
to see the results of this change.
Just to know that that, that comment came up at the presentation at the last board meeting. And so, that you know that that was heard. Uh, while they don't have a polished version, our principals, uh, including now, uh, Principal Belmont, who'll be moving over to Nicolet, are working on a, a rubric that would help outline what is the result of those things. Things like participation in activities, participation in those, uh, family discussions, um, IEP meetings. Uh, they're talking about things like the academic results or, or amount of minutes used for professional development. So, while, again, there's not a finished product, I just want to make sure you realize that was heard. And they are working on that right now.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other, um, questions? If not, then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Uh, next up is adopting the resolution to terminate or lay off non-licensed staff at the end of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. As stated in the resolution, Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Human Resources, will be presenting this recommendation. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening. Um, bringing to you tonight, uh, well, actually, two different recommendations. But the first one is directly related to the action that was just taken by the Board. As for reducing the amount of student contact time at the middle schools, we no longer need a quarter of an hour for each of our special ed EAs, which are currently at seven and a half hours. They'll be going down to seven and a quarter, which aligns with our special ed EA time at the elementary buildings. Okay? Both in the elementary and the middle school will be at seven and a quarter. Our high school meets with our special ed EAs are for seven hours. So, we're still having a significant amount of time at the elementary and middle school as far as, uh, support contact time. Okay? So, that's what the first resolution is for. And it is my recommendation, uh, that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Independent School District One-Ninety-One, that the following non-licensed staff are hereby terminated or laid off for the following amounts at the end of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Be it further resolved, that written note assistant to said, um, education assistance regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Burb.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Next order of business is to adopt the resolution to lay off classified personnel from their positions effective at the end of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Stacy Silvine will once again present the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. This recommendation, uh, is more broad than the last one. Last one was directly impacting the, the amount of hours for our special ed EAs. This one will cover our non-licensed staff, uh, EA's, uh, uh, family liaison that's at Harriet Bishop, a clerk, uh, one of our secretary's clerical positions. So, this is, uh, going over a number of different units. Um, but it is a reduction based on reductions of positions. It's my recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Independent School District One-Ninety-One, that the following classified personnel are hereby laid off from their positions effective at the end of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Be it further resolved, that written note assistant to said staff regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
So moved by Director Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Alt. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is to authorize Executive Director of Business Services Lisa Ryder and Superintendent Dr. Battle to sign the joint powers agreement between the City of Burnsville and ISD One-Ninety-One for the Burnsville Senior Citizen Center. Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, will be presenting this recommendation as well as the next recommendation. Welcome back, Lisa.
Thank you. So, it was in March when we noted that the agreement that we have with the City of Burnsville related to the senior center, um, was, had expired and that we needed to renew. This has been an agreement that has been in place since nineteen-eighty-one. And it is a three-year agreement that we routinely, um, it hasn't changed much over the years. It essentially requires a few things. From, um, our perspective as a school district, we're providing the space. We employ the director and, um, take responsibility for that employment and all related costs. We, uh, provide, um, insurance and have the city listed as additionally insured. We also are the, uh, finance, um, finance, uh, fiscal host. So, we maintain all the financial records and pay all the bills. Then what is occurring is we share an annual report with the senior center. And we invoice the city for fifty percent of the annual administrative salaries, benefits, maintenance, utilities, and custodial expenses, as well as the chatter newsletters. So, there are certain costs that they, they, uh, the City of Burnsville will participate at fifty percent. And so, that invoice then is estimated, as you see in the agreement, for the next three years. Those are estimates, but what they are invoiced is based upon actuals. And, um, so this just gives them an, an idea of how much they need to set aside in their budget, as well as they are a calendar-based budget, while we are fiscal year-based. And, um, so that's somewhat why this gap in, in keeping track of this particular one, um, fell through the cracks. So, we also have a hold harmless and indemnity clause that's included in the agreement. Um, and that really is the highlights of this particular three-year memo of understanding that we continue to employ as a joint powers agreement with the City of Burnsville.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. Seconded by Director Connor. Is there any discussion? All right. I just had one quick question, actually. So you said that we've had this joint powers agreement since, I think you said, 1981? Is it always renewed three years at a time, or is that?
I, I know for the last, my time here has been a three-year agreement.
Okay. Is there a reason why it's three and not four or five, or I'm just curious?
No, but I, I think in our experience in working with them on the City of Burnsville on, say, the liaison agreement, three seems to be the year they, the number of years they like to look to, because things can change and shift and such, right? So no exact reason.
Okay. That was just, just popped into my head as you were speaking. Thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And now the last item on the agenda is to authorize Executive Director of Business Services Lisa Ryder and Superintendent Dr. Battle to sign the joint powers agreement between the City of Burnsville and ISD 191 for the garage. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Oh, wait, you need to speak first. Sorry.
That's okay.
Get ahead of myself.
Just to highlight a few things here, this is a joint powers agreement that as the garage was created, we wanted to participate in that process, whereas our students have benefited from that relationship, being able to have that opportunity to really explore and utilize that space and, and gain some experience there. This requires some renewal in the fact that we just want to make sure that we have an ongoing program that we can utilize with, with the city related to the garage, and our students can continue with the pandemic. We haven't really had a whole lot of opportunity in the last couple of years, so we want to make sure that moving forward, we have this in place, and it was time to renew this agreement. So it is intended to be a five-year agreement effective from the, the timing in which all parties have signed. So the, it's the City of Burnsville, ourselves, and the Twin Cities Catalyst music that really function here. This is, a but, annual budget is reviewed annually regularly to begin in July and run to June. We are basically providing the area within our schools for the BYC program. We employ the coordinator for the BYC program, who then supervises and facilitates the scheduling with the garage for the student opportunities. We provide the liability insurance for the middle schools, and we also serve as fiscal agent here again, maintaining all those records and paying the bills. There is a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, which does have some requirements when it comes to financial reporting, progress reports, and data collection. That grant is actually received by the City of Burnsville, and then they flow that money to us. So what that looks like for us is we submit on a quarterly basis invoices to them showing our costs, primarily those costs that are related to that supervision. And that is then submitted as a part of their federal grant requirement from the city. The city's responsibilities include allocating the available CDBG funds and budgeting annually to reimburse us for our costs. We, they, excuse me, pay the maintenance, utilities, and custodial expenses related to the garage facility. They assist with the grant funding opportunities, because oftentimes the city knows and can obtain some of those grant opportunities better and faster than we can. And they provide leadership also, and it's really a collaborative process. There is a whole, hold harmless agreement as well associated with this. We're talking about a 9,181 square foot space that the garage exists in. And as you read through the agreement, there is more information, like with schedules and things of that nature, and what that all entails. But essentially, the, what I've discussed are the highlights for this particular agreement, and it is a joint powers agreement as well.
Thank you. Now, is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor, seconded by Director Alt. Is there any discussion? All right. I'll just say that I know it's just a coincidence in timing, but I appreciate getting both, both of these things that are so important to our partnership with the city on the same night, that it supports both our seniors in the community and our youth. So it's a pleasant coincidence in timing, so I appreciate that. All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And that concludes our, do we take motion to adjourn? We don't.
No, you don't.
All right. That concludes our meeting for tonight. The meeting is now adjourned at 7:24. Thank you very much.